Order. All right, the time is now 6:04. We will start our open session for the El Segundo City Council meeting, our first one since our summer recess. So, welcome back, everyone. Madam Clerk, would you please call the order, or call the roll?
Yes, I would love to. Councilmember Keldora?
Here.
Councilmember Giroux?
Here.
Councilmember Boiles?
Here.
Mayor Protem Baldino?
Here.
And Mayor Pimentel?
Here. And now, we will start with the invocation from Father Alexi, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Protem. Father Alexi, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. You may or may not be aware that each month, the Pope, in this case Pope Leo, selects a special intention for which he prays and composes a prayer. It's my intention to share his prayer for August with us all this evening, but coincidentally, or perhaps providentially, I think some of the themes of his prayer resonate with what I heard these young people practicing to say to you at the meeting tonight. I prefer to believe it's providentially. Let us pray. Oh God, Lord of our history, faithful companion and loving presence, you who never tire of coming to meet us. Here we are, in need of your peace. We live in times of fear and division. Sometimes we act as if we were alone, building walls that separate us from one another, forgetting that we are brothers and sisters. Send us your Spirit, oh Lord, to enkindle within us the desire to understand one another, to listen, to live together with respect and compassion. Give us the courage to seek paths of dialogue, to respond to conflict with gestures of eternity, to open our hearts to others without fear of differences. Make us builders of bridges, able to overcome borders and ideologies, able to see others through the eyes of the heart, recognizing every person and invaluable dignity. Help us create spaces where hope can flourish, where diversity is not a threat, but a richness that makes us more human. Amen.
All right, place your hand on your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mayor Protem, and Father Alexi, as always, thank you. Thank you. That was actually great. I shouldn't say actually, that was great. Special presentations, we've got a few. Chief Avery, would you like to lead us out, please?
Our new emergency manager, Melissa Mendoza Campos, please. So, Melissa comes to us from Garden Grove. She was a 911 dispatcher, and she has been well involved with all emergency management practices and actions in Garden Grove. She was with that department for over 20 years, and she was, he held positions as a terrorism liaison officer and tactical dispatcher assigned to the SWAT team. In order to pass five years, Melissa also assisted the Garden Grove Emergency Manager in their duties, including creation, evaluation of the emergency operations plan and their center. And complying with all FEMA and county grant requirements, she's also achieved her masters in emergency management from Cal State Long Beach. And her focus really was about organization, physical design of the emergency operation center, which we know we need. So, I'm here before you, very happy and very thankful for Melissa. So, please say aye.
Thank you very much. I'm very pleased, very grateful to have this position. Thank you, Chief Avery and Daryl, for offering it to me. I can't wait to move forward. We're already working on our EOC plan. Our local hazard mitigation plan should be done soon. In fact, next city council meeting, we should be giving you a presentation on how it's working, and then after that, we'll have it ready for your adoption. I hope you will approve it. But yes, there's a lot of work to do, and I'm excited to get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Disaster Council meets on the 3rd of September and Public Safety on the 18th. Look, you're already running away. Flat on foot. Is that our disaster plan? I will start training. Next, Director Mancini, Wreckin' Parks.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Welcome back. It's good to see everybody after a long break. It has been a very busy summer here, even though we haven't been spending as much time with all of you. We've run a gamut of summer day camps all summer long. They've all been a tremendous success. But tonight, I'm here to share with you a little bit about a brand-new camp that we launched this summer called Camp Lit. Lit stands for Leaders in Training. This is a program that we established for El Segundo youth aged 12 to 17. And I could stand up here and tell you all about how amazing it is and how much fun we had, but I thought it would be better if you could hear a little bit about it from some of the campers themselves. So, I have four wonderful campers that I worked very closely with this summer, and also my recreation specialist, Brooklyn Jones, who helped me lead the camp. And we're going to give you a little glimpse into our summer. Come on up.
Can you hear me fine? Okay. Hello and good evening, Honorable Mayor Pimentel. My name is Leila. I am one of the 66 El Segundo youth that participated this summer in a brand-new leadership camp for teens, hosted by the Recreation Parks and Library Department called Camp Lit. Camp Lit is an awesome experience for local teens ages 12 to 17 to work alongside recreation staff to learn about leadership, teamwork, communication, community service, and more. Camp Lit was led by Director Mancini and recreation specialist Brooklyn Jones. The city held seven weeks of this camp, oh, seven weeks, sorry, seven weeks of camp this summer with an average of 15 to 20 kids participating each week. Are we on the next slide? Okay, cool. One of the coolest things about Camp Lit was that we got to meet and work with many city staff and city leaders, such as Fire Chief George Avery, Captain Ryan Danowitz, Captain Gilbert Sanchez, Councilmember Giroux, Mayor Pimentel, Pimentel, sorry, and Finance Staff Liz Lydic and Leana Osborne. Chief Avery and Councilmember Giroux taught us how to play pickleball at the police, and how to play pickleball. The police captains led us in a giant kickball game, a giant kickball game at Brett Field. Mayor Pimentel made us complete team-building challenges, and Liz and Leana helped us bake cookies for the Jocelyn Center seniors. Thank you.
Learning to get back to the community was one of the best parts about camp. We held two fundraisers and earned money to complete three community service projects. Our first project was to put together care packages for the homeless that we presented to the patches team. We had to decide as a group what items we felt were most important for the kids, and then we shopped for the items and put them together. Our second project was to raise money to put together Welcome Back to School kits for Center Street and Richmond Street school staff. And in our last community service project, we held a lemonade stand competition to raise money to buy care items for shelter pets. We made over $400 in less than two hours and then picked out so many great things for the animals that will be delivered to the shelter next week.
Camp Lit also supports our Camp Calabunga and Tiny Tots Day Camps by working in the camps each day. We helped camp staff with arts and crafts, team games, and other projects. At the end of each week, we planned all camp activities that we then led with the campers. We did a picnic, a mini Olympic event, and collaborative art lesson, and others. The campers loved our time in the camps, and we learned a lot by working with the day camp staff.
Leadership lessons were a part of each week at camp. We took leadership assessments, personality sorter tests, and studied strong leaders such as Frida Kahlo and Michelle Obama. We also watched films with leadership themes such as Remember the Titans and Dead Poets Society, and then had discussions about the characters in the films and how they demonstrated strength, resiliency, and creativity, and dealing with challenges they faced. And finally, we completed a bunch of team-building games, all designed to help us learn about ourselves and others and how we each bring something special to a team. Overall, Camp Lit was a huge success, and we were all very grateful to be a part of this experience.
So, yes, as you heard, it was a very busy summer. One of the things that was awesome about this program was the opportunity the kids had to work with staff very closely, myself, Brooklyn, other members of the city staff team. The parents had fantastic feedback. We had like over 66 kids, which, if you know teenagers, I know many of us here have them, it's very difficult to get them engaged. So, this was a wonderful program, and we look forward to doing it next year. And I believe you've got some certificates, Mayor, to present.
All right. All right, Amalia. Chase Barron. Madeline Baumler. Jewel Blake. Jules Blanchett. AJ DeBlong. Saleen Gallardo. Amy Glucksmann. Ada Haley. Emma Haley. Cindy Hodge. Heather Howitt. Leila Nelson. Bella Farisi. Andrew Rasmussen. Benjamin Rayburn. Catherine Sable. And Jenna Suoy. Emerson Fox. Kayden Weinstein. Hunter Zadzicak. And we're back to Judah.
Okay, you guys can get in there for a picture. You gotta squeeze in maybe some of the taller ones, go in the back, taller ones.
Madam Clerk, how many people do we have for public comment today?
Mr. Mayor, we have four, either two or three of which have something to do with an agenda item.
Okay. Why don't we have the fourth one, the fourth one's gonna go first, is that right?
Yes, we renumbered, and I would like to invite Nina Baumler, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor Pimentel. My name is Nina Baumler. I am a parent of one of the Lit Camp members, Madeline Baumler. And we have a presentation for Ms. Mancini and also Brooklyn on behalf of the parents, really just to express our great gratitude for the amazing experience that they've given, the amazing example that they've given to the girls and boys as to what leadership in the community means. So, thank you very much, and I'm going to invite Madeline and Sydney to come up and present. You guys can go. Thank you.
How many minutes?
Good job, buddy. Bye, guys.
Here, let's go out there and we'll do house.
I'm better than us, you two.
I'm better than us, you're tears. You won't, no tears. You will be next now.
All right, Madam Clerk, we have three comments?
We do, I would like to invite Val Smith, please, to come up. She would like to address the council on item number sixteen, Senior Housing.
And I will say, ma- item sixteen, I think we'll move up to right after the public hearing, so to eleven, I think. But we'll get to that in a moment, five minutes, Ms. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Pimentel and City Council. I'm here, uh, by the way, I'm a six-year resident of Park Vista Senior Housing at six fifteen Holly, and very happy to live there. I'm here tonight in support of item sixteen on the ident- agenda, which amends the bylaws of the Senior Housing Board to add a sixth resident, non-voting member to the board. I have residents here from the, the building who are also in favor, and we thank you for moving it up so they will stay and not have it sixteen on the list, thank you very much. I feel it's important, and we do too, that the board have a member who is a resident with the inside perspective of Park Vista. I ask that you vote in favor of this amendment to the bylaws, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, uh, John McCullough would like to discuss the Art Walk.
Thank you, council. I'm John McCullough from the El Segundo Art Walk. Uh, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes today to kind of talk about the event coming up this weekend. We're, we're super excited about it. And I wanted to thank some of the city staff for, for all the hard work, you know, getting all the, all the different elements, you know, all the different committees and, uh, the public services to kind of make this thing work. Um, it's a, it's a pretty complicated event, uh, but a, a really good partnership, um, with the city. And so, I wanted to take a couple of minutes and say thank you to the council for, for supporting it, uh, and also thanking, uh, the, the Arts and Culture Committee as well. Um, but the Art Walk this, this weekend, um, a few of the details, um, that kind of wanted to get out there too, um, is that we're having, uh, forty-one businesses, um, we're having over eighty artists, we're having nine bands, uh, we have, uh, a skating exhibition from Champ Camp, which is cool. We've got, um, the Chamber Orchestra from the El Segundo High School performing. Um, we've got just a wide variety of glass blowers, um, musicians, uh, painters, artisans, um, and we're just really excited about the way the whole community comes out to support it. Um, we've got a comedy show, uh, from our own local, uh, David Williamson on Thursday night, kicking it off, and, um, and this year, we've, we've, we've turned it into a nonprofit. So, we're, we're a five-oh-one C-three, it's the El Segundo Art Walk Foundation. Um, and we feel like even with the a little bit of a complicated, uh, structure, and with the partnership with the city, um, I think the nonprofit status is designed to kind of help that partnership. And so, I think this year, um, we would like to kind of talk maybe, I guess at the next council meeting, um, about the nonprofit status and how that affects with the city fees. Cause I think there was a little bit of a disconnect this year with that. Um, but overall, we're, we're, we're very excited about the event, and I wanted to thank Ally, for all of her, her support from her staff, uh, from the police department, the fire department, and, uh, everybody else. We're very excited about the event and, um, excited to be a nonprofit as well. So, thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough.
Jeffrey West, I would like to invite you to come up, please. You'll be talking about girl softball fields.
Good evening, council members, mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I am here on behalf of El Segundo Girl Softball, as well as, uh, they are as well, to formally request free use rights to the softball field currently being planned for construction at Richmond Street School, anticipated for completion in summer of twenty twenty-six. The need: As you know, the city of El Segundo is geographically small with a limited number of athletic fields to meet the needs of multiple youth and adult organizations. El Segundo Girl Softball has been severely impacted by these limitations. Field scarcity: ESGS often struggles to find adequate space to accommodate our league. Shared facilities: Our program currently depends on Rec Park Softball Field and Richmond Street Field, both of which are shared with numerous other groups, unlike other fields in the city that operate with fewer or no shared uses. Example: Summer Adult Softball, Fall AYSO Adult Kickball Little League, Spring Little League, High School Varsity and Junior Varsity. Impact on El Segundo Girls Softball Players: Practices must be limited to one per week in the fall and two per week in the spring. Each team must share a practice field with another team. El Segundo Girl Softball has no dedicated batting cages, instead we share with Babe Ruth across the entire city. By comparison, Little League benefits from two private cages with no shared use. No other youth sports league in the city appears to face this level of restriction in both time and space. These structural limitations directly affect the quality of play, player development, and even our ability to grow the program. Steps already taken: Recognizing the limited resources, ESGS has been proactive in seeking solutions. For the past eighteen months, our leadership has worked closely with Ti- Kim Lenz to s- explore opportunities to expand access. El Segundo Girls Softball has committed to fully funding the construction of a new softball field at Richmond Street School. The project is ready to begin with ESGS covering a hundred percent of the costs. Our request, in recognition of our investment and the critical need for the dedicated space, ESGS respectfully requests that exclusive primary use rights to be granted to ESGS for the new Richmond Street softball field for practices and games. The only exception to this priority use would be AYSO during its fall season, consistent with historical scheduling. A formal addendum in, be incorporated into the joint use agreement explicitly guaranteeing ESGS first u- use rights to remain in effect across future agreements. In closing, this request is not about restricting access, but about creating equity and fair opportunity for a program serving hundreds of young female athletes in our community. By securing first use rights to a field that ESGS is funding and initiating, we will finally be able to provide our players with the same levels of access and consistency that many other youth organizations already enjoy. On behalf of the El Segundo Girl Softball, we ask for your partnership in making this project and this commitment to our youth athletes a reality. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, sir. All right, City Manager, any comments?
Other than, uh, item sixteen, as you know, is on the agenda this evening. I want to thank Mr. McCullough for his, all of his efforts for the Art Walk, looking forward to it this weekend, for sure. And then in terms of the last speaker, Mr. West, um, you know, defer to maybe Ally in terms of, of where we sit. Well, that's part of the al- field allocation.
Yes, so we will, we will go over this, or I think we'll be able to have a little bit more discussion when this item, agenda item comes up, and I can speak to that at that time.
Thank you, Dorit Rizzi. Hold on one second, um, are we, I, I didn't even know a field was being built there. So, is that a con- is that a, I know there's been discussions about it since...
This is a partnership that the El Segundo Girl Softball has with the school district, um, but then we retain the scheduling.
Yeah, so this, this falls into the, I hate to say I told you so, but I told you so, pocket of things, where didn't want the city to have to be involved with that field, because it's not ours. But I guess I'll be ready to talk about this when the time comes.
Yes.
All right, with that, for procedural motions, I'll entertain a motion to read all items by title only. So moved. Baldino seconds. All in favor? Aye. Five-zero, consent counter, are there any pulls?
Yes, I'd like to pull four and five, please.
Four and five, I will pull ten. Any further pulls? All right, is there a motion to, uh, approve items two, three, six, seven, eight, and nine? So, Mo's boils. Boils on the first.
All second.
Keldor for the second, all in favor? Aye. Five-zero, Councilor Boils, item four to you.
Item four is the resolution adopting plans and specifications for the replacement of Gordon Clubhouse HVAC system at Rec Park, project number PW twenty-five fourteen. Just curious, do we still have that on the capital improvement project list as a facility that we want to rehab? And if so, what, what timeline on that one?
Yes, that is still, uh, unless Cheryl wants to correct me, that, that is still on the capital improvement list. Uh, I'm not sure exactly which year we've, we've projected that to take place, but I know it's within the next three years.
It's on the five-year CIP.
Five-year?
Um, but I think we have it adopted for, um, next year being appropriated for design, being a conceptual design taking place, um, around seven hundred, eight hundred thousand for next year. And then two years later, we have budgeted for actual improvements out there.
Is the HVAC likely to remain intact and useful?
Yeah, these will actually be reused, so the, the work right now, because the units up there are not operational right now, so we need to get something operational, and so this is under our, um, our CIP, um, adopted budget that we have. So, they'll, they'll still be in place and operational and won't be replaced in four years when we do the work.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think that can, when we looked at the complete rebuild at the last phase of, of part, Rec and Park, the lowest number we saw was like twelve million dollars for a complete rebuild if we were gonna do it. So, I don't foresee us rebuilding, I think these things will probably stay on there.
I'll move approval if there's no other.
Pimentel second?
All right.
All those in favor? Aye. Item five to you.
Item five, agreement with Monday.com to renew the software license. Pretty hefty fee for a three-year, uh, renewal, uh, software license, especially given that we're moving to an ERP that might have similar functionality. So, just, I don't know why we're committing to a three-year software license at this price. And I also have a concern with not bidding again for software.
Hello, Paul, interest that?
Yeah, hi, Mayor, council members, I'm Paul Silverstein, I'm the intern IT director. Um, I'll be renewing this, um, for the city of El Segundo. Um, this product does little different functionality than the ERP system. Uh, is project management, tracking, uh, contract management, scheduling, um, time management. Uh, it offers, um, a little bit more functionality differences than the ERP. We're going with a three-year contract, um, mainly because first year's gonna be a lot of adoption. Second year, we'll be using it. Third year, if we decide we don't want it, then we'll have the opportunity to move away. If we did something in one year, we wouldn't really have the opportunity to understand if we wanted the product or not.
Is this being used right now?
Yes, it is being right now by the CMO department.
How did we pick the fifty-seat licenses, or whatever the numbers, what, what was that based on?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Uh, so we've been using Monday.com, um, slowly rolling it out to see how effective it is. Um, and it's become very effective for all departments, um, some more than others. For example, the police department uses it quite a bit, Rec Park Library uses it quite a bit, CMO uses it. Um, what it does is it creates an internal process for managing tasks, um, for contract management. It has automated notifications, so you put your contract in, you put in the amount, um, you make sure that you have all of the necessary insurance, all of the necessary paperwork, and it's all within Monday telling you, you need this, you need this, you need this, so that you don't forget things at the last minute, um, that it's a uniform process, and it's been extremely helpful, um, and more and more users are adopting it and, and getting on board. Uh, it, it helps with accountability, it helps with efficiency. Um, we in the CMO have a task list for each of our divisions, um, everything that needs to be done throughout the year. We use it in strategic planning, we manage progress towards all strategic planning action items using Monday.com. Um, and each department updates their action items for the strategic plan, which resulted in the annual report that you all received. So, it's an excellent tool for internal operations, workflow, efficiency, and just tracking, making sure that everybody knows what they need to be doing, when it needs to be done, and they're accountable. And you can do across, you know, you can tag different people, um, it's very, very helpful.
Thank you, yeah, I'm very familiar with it, I just believe with Outlook and, uh, with ERP, there's gonna be some functionality overlap, but again, if I'm the only one that has a concern, I think we're, I think first that, and then also I still fundamentally do not agree with us not going out to bid. The second time we've done this, we need to go out to bid for software. We will get better pricing when we go out to bid, there's no question.
So, we did do, um, an extensive informal bidding process where we identified three companies that provide this type of service. Um, we couldn't identify anymore, we looked for all the ones that we could find, um, and we compared them very carefully. We started very small, that's why it wasn't this big, you know, the number you see now. We started very small to see if it would be effective, um, but we did do a thorough process, um, in evaluating each of the, the, uh, options. So, it wasn't just, oh, we like Monday, let's go with it.
No, I, I get it, but like Asana is very similar, I've used both.
We did, that was one of them.
They're cheaper, though, typically per, per seat. So, again, I just have a fundamental issue with purchasing software, committing to it without going out to bid and doing a selective process. So, thanks.
Tyler doesn't do this, you can't do this in our ERP system?
So, there is one thing.
This is not novel technology.
Tyler does not do this.
Tyler doesn't do?
There's one thing, and I'm just kind of...
I thought Tyler, I thought the reason we paid both kidneys for Tyler was it could do everything.
So, I can speak to Monday.com and then maybe Paul can speak to Tyler, but, um, we have developed an internal tracking process for contract management within Monday.com, and we're starting to roll it out, um, and through the Tyler ERP, uh, we identified that there is an inter- uh, process that Tyler offers for contracts, it's very different. The Tyler process is, um, more about tracking invoices and tracking paydowns on each account and what your account balance is for each contract, whereas Monday is, who's responsible for this contract, who's the contact for this contract, what insurance do they need? Do they have all the insurance, do they have their business license? All those types of things that aren't within the Tyler system. So, I think they could work together, um, in terms of you get the contract in place and then you upload it into Tyler and you pay down on it that way.
Just piggybacking off what Barbara mentioned, uh, regards to the contract aspect too, because Tyler also provides contract, but they do contract tracking in a different way in the financial side of it, but not the actual management side, meaning you can't do PDF, digital signature, you can't route that. Unfortunately, Tyler doesn't do that, I wish it was all in one, so that we don't have two different systems talking, or they can't even talk to each other, really. Uh, but reality was Tyler was not able to do that functionality.
Can, did you say they can't talk to each other, is there an API that they can integrate together?
Right now, we're looking into it, but from what I'm told, not right now.
I mean, I, I, not only do I cringe at the, the bidding piece, but I, I, I cringe at us ending up with fifty-five different pieces of software again, where we have Rec One over here and Tyler over there, and...
For me, on the, it's, for the Tyler side, it's really for the fi- financial aspect of the system. I know more on the Monday.com, it's more of the project tracking side, so it's really different. I wish they both could talk to each other and eventually, hopefully, they could do an API so that it will talk to each other, but for now, I know that it does not.
But we did do a full demo with Tyler on the contract.
Yeah, we did.
And to make a comparison, because if we could, we could.
I would hate for staff to add information here on this side and then also on the financial side too, but right now, it does not talk to each other.
Any further discussion on this eighty percent margin piece check we're about to write?
Glad to hear that staff is finding it useful and hopefully it'll make you guys even better at your jobs, so I'm all for it. Is that a motion? With that, I'll move approval.
Baldino on the first.
All second.
All those in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
Three-two. Three-two, we're buying software. Keldor, Baldino, and Jeru on the yes. Uh, item ten, mine is quick and painless. Uh, this is the resolution authorizing staff to file applications for Measure A funds through fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty, sorry, twenty-five, twenty-six. Director Mancini, honestly, I, I just want, this is just for the people watching at home.
Sure.
Despite the fact there are twenty-six letters in the alphabet, our beloved county keeps using Measure A. This is not to be confused with the unsheltered homeless funding.
Correct.
Which is an enormous pot of money, this is two thousand sixteen Measure A, which deals with parks. I do not want someone sitting there at home to think, Measure A, what are we doing with parks and unsheltered homeless at the same time? So, that is the only reason I pulled this item, you do not need to elucidate it, I support it unequivocally. I just don't know why we named both of these Measure A, like, why can't there just be a Measure L or T? I just don't know why we named both of these Measure A, like why can't there just be a Measure L or T? With that, I will move approval.
Baldino, seconds.
The second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And Boils did not oppose. All right, we have our first public hearing. Madam Clerk, this is the time and place heretofore fixed for a public meeting. An ordinance amending the Smoky Hollow specific plan, permitted uses and definitions related to incubator and innovative. What's that? No, we're going to do, this is a public hearing first. Then we'll do senior housing. It will be the first staff presentation right after. I lost my place. Environmental assessment, I promise this will be fast. Number EA thirteen seventy-four and specific plan amendment number SPA twenty-four oh-three. City Clerk, was proper notice of the hearing given?
Proper notice was given.
All right. Has there been any written communication received regarding this public hearing?
No public communication has been received.
The public hearing is now open. Mr. Samaras, I suspect you will be presenting on this item?
You're correct.
Floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor Pimentel and fellow council members. The item before you is an ordinance addressing incubator and innovative startup uses in the Smoky Hollow specific plan. Staff in our department has been working on it for a good year. We've done a lot of research on the topic, did two study sessions with the planning commission. We did some outreach to startup businesses in the area. And the ordinance before you is sort of the culmination of our efforts to date. Just a quick word about sort of how we got here, a little bit of background. The specific plan envisions the area as an incubator hub, attracting creative, cutting-edge technology businesses, and providing flexible research and development space for them. Some of the specific objectives in the plan include introducing flexibility in our regulations, supporting innovative startups, and also addressing tech uses that don't quite fit into the traditional land use categories in the specific plan. But what does it mean, traditional land uses, and how do the startups fit into these categories? Well, these are some of the traditional uses permitted in Smoky Hollow today. They have specific definitions in the plan. And sometimes those definitions are narrowly drafted and tend to exclude new and innovative technology companies that are looking for startup space. The startups sometimes actually combine several of these uses into one. Or sometimes over time, they might evolve from one use to another, starting as a small office or R and D space into a full manufacturing operation. In other instances, they don't quite fit into one of the categories. In fact, staff has interacted with some of these companies and, you know, they tell us that they don't define themselves as one of these uses. So there's a little bit of a gray area about what to do with them and how to fit them in. One example is companies that use new material types or raw materials. And those are typically associated with heavy industrial uses. And we would put them through kind of a lengthy review and approval process if we categorize them as heavy industrial uses. But we, but they tend to use these materials in limited amounts. So they're, they're not quite the heavy, large-scale industrial uses. So as a result, when faced with this uncertainty or the prospect of going through a lengthy entitlement process, some of these companies choose not to locate in Smoky Hollow, even though they seem compatible with other uses in the area and with the vision of the specific plan as a hub for these types of businesses. So the draft ordinance before you is an attempt to address some of those issues that I just described. And it would do so by doing two things, adding a new definition for incubator and innovative startup uses in the Smoky Hollow specific plan. And then adding those types of uses as sort of permitted use in the permitted uses table in the plan. And also to set up a permit process for them, and that is clear and efficient. So jumping into the definition real briefly, the definition that we proposed and it was in your packet has four parts. First is a general definition that is intentionally broad, so it's inclusive and doesn't exclude some of these businesses that might be interested in locating in Smoky Hollow. It includes a list of permitted activities or functions for the business space and a list of the different types of industries that we're really looking to attract to the area. And then finally, some operational characteristics of these uses. Just as a, an example, you know, these types of uses are intended to be sort of clean industrial uses. They don't have any major sort of environmental impacts and they don't engage in large-scale manufacturing or use of, you know, sort of large amounts of raw or hazardous materials. When it comes to the permit process in the permitted uses table in the specific plan, we would add this use as permitted by right. If they don't use any raw or hazardous materials, permit them with an AUP. If they use only limited amounts, and that's an administrative, fairly efficient process. And then permit them with a CUP if we find that they use substantial amounts of newer raw materials or do large-scale manufacturing, essentially acting like a heavy industrial use. In summary, ordinance essentially would put in place a definition that attracts startups to the area, sort of sends a message that startup uses are welcome in Smoky Hollow. It would set up a clear and efficient review process that's flexible. And it would be consistent with a Smoky Hollow vision that seeks to promote, to attract these types of uses to Smoky Hollow. And with that, we conclude our presentation and recommend that council conduct a public hearing, introduce and waive first reading of the proposed ordinance, and schedule a second reading at your next meeting on, in September. And that concludes my presentation.
The public hearing is now open for public input. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Timatel, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, council discussion.
One question. So heavy industrial is something that's currently allowed in Smoky Hollow with a CUP, which is a conditional use permit. Can you give us any kind of an example? Has there been an applicant for that? I'm just, my only concern with this is compatibility of uses. Heavy industrial to me implies something different, but if it's a current use that's already there and we can't think of an instance where that's come before planning commission council, then perhaps it's not something I should be concerned about.
When we think about heavy industrial uses, we're thinking about something large scale. Smoky Hollow, generally speaking, has smaller properties, smaller sort of operations. So you would have to imagine a business that is manufacturing large amounts of products or large-sized products and also utilizing a lot of sort of raw material, you know, in the process. So we don't have a lot of companies exactly at that scale. But we have been approached by companies that may need to expand in the future. And so if they need to expand using those types of materials, you know, the CUP process kind of slowed them down, made them think twice about locating in Smoky Hollow. I hope that helps answer your question.
And there's a clear delineation between, I know in here it says involving limited use of raw materials, but there's actually a calculation for what that is, where you jump into the next category, right? It's not subjective.
In fact, it's, there's not a clear delineation. And that was one of the hardest things that we were, that we wrestled with in bringing this ordinance to you. Depending on the types of materials, they can have different sort of impacts. And it's very hard to pinpoint an exact amount to set limits. And it would be almost arbitrary to set a limit and then automatically exclude the next company that wants to use a little bit more. So our suggestion in this ordinance is to allow that discretionary process at the administrative level, at the director level first, to go through, evaluate each case individually, and just take different factors into account and make a judgment. And obviously, those decisions, those determinations are evaluated by the planning commission ultimately. So we have some, let's say, checks and balances, but flexibility at the same time.
Thank you.
Any other council discussion?
No, I think this is a great idea. And if you recall, when we first did the Smoky Hollow plan, we kind of want to open that area up and let the kind of market decide who wants to move in there and what do you want to do. So by kind of streamlining this to encourage kind of what we already have over there, I think it's a job well done. And hopefully it will help, you know, encourage even more of these startup tech companies to find their selves a new home here in El Segundo. So thanks for putting this together, Paul.
Sure.
That's remarkable. In twenty eighteen, when we were starting the Smoky Hollow process, we were worried about how many pool tables and if we were going to let people paint murals on the side of the building. And now we're at zero percent vacancy with people asking, how do I make this thing work? I mean, it's a testament to the responsiveness of your entire department. I really appreciate it. City Attorney, will you read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, Mayor and Council, an ordinance amending the Smoky Hollow specific plan, permitted uses and definitions related to incubator and innovative startup uses, environmental assessment number EA three thirteen seventy-four, and specific plan number SPA twenty-four dash zero-three is ready for introduction.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
This is for introduction.
I'll introduce, I'll introduce, Boils. There we go, again, Boils on the introduction.
This we brought back.
So introduced.
September.
Second.
Second meeting for potential adoption.
That was my anchorman moment. He'll read anything.
All right, as promised, we will move item sixteen up. An ordinance amending the bylaws of the Senior Citizen Housing Corporation Board to add one current Park Vista tenant to serve as a non-voting member. Who will present on this item? City Attorney.
Mayor and Council, the council recently indicated a desire to consider adding a non-voting member resident of Park Vista to the current Park Vista Board, or Senior Housing Board. The board is currently comprised of five voting members. In order to accomplish this, our office looked at the current composition of the nonprofit and also the public, or the Political Reform Act and having a non-voting member and whether that would raise any conflicts, and determined that the best way to address this would be by adopting an ordinance which would amend the, and restate the bylaws so that this would be a required member of the board and that we think that then meets the requirements of the Political Reform Act so that there will not be a conflict of interest for this non-voting member to sit at the meetings and be part of the discussion. They won't be voting, but they'll still potentially have the ability to influence, influence those that are voting. And so the Political Reform Act has a specific provision to address this type of member. And this is what we're proposing to stay within the ambit of that section of the Political Reform Act. Hope that explains why we brought this forward and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Council discussion.
So in the end, Mark, what are we really talking about here? It's an HOA. It's a glorified HOA, is what this is, right? So what is, what is the huge problem with having that? Having someone who's there having a say in the matter. I think one of the biggest problems we have over there is that they don't have a say in the matter.
I don't think it is a huge problem. We just were making sure that legally, the person sitting there, if you want to put a non-voting member who's a resident, because they live there. So the decisions being made by the board could affect them financially. And the Political Reform Act addresses a specific issue like this where you want to have a non-voting member who's a resident. It could be a mobile home park or this kind of residency issue. And it allows for that, but there's certain requirements and we're meeting those requirements by presenting it to you this way.
So the problem is if this was not a city-owned building, we wouldn't be having this problem. It's a city-owned entity. So otherwise, it would just be a private business and they could run it however they want. So the issue really is because it's a city-owned property, we have certain things that we have to follow. So we can still have a member on there, just can comment all day long, but can't have a final vote.
That's correct.
Okay.
If they're a voting member, they'd basically have to recuse themselves on every item and then have no input. This way, it's a working compromise where there's representation of people who live there and they can add in their experiences and help make the decisions, but they just don't get a vote. And if it aligns with our obligations under the law, then I think it's a good idea.
It's definitely a step in the right direction. If they were a voting member, they would still have the same linear foot from where they live requirements, right? That's why it makes it totally impractical. They couldn't vote on somebody that's within two hundred fifty feet of there, whatever it is, five hundred feet of where they live. Now, I believe this, if we, this ordinance would be introducing it.
Correct.
Not, or be adopting.
That's correct. It'd be introducing and then we would bring this again back at the September second meeting for adoption if it's introduced.
You almost fooled me with that one.
All right, any further council discussion? No one has introduced it. Do you have to read this? Who would like to introduce this?
I will introduce.
Councilmember Jeru introduces. It's our first day back, first day back. All right, back to item twelve, Amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement. Director Reddick.
Mayor, members of the council. The item I have for you tonight is the Third Amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement. In the City Manager's Employment Agreement, it requires that or allows that the council can provide an annual performance evaluation and reevaluate the terms and conditions, including salary of his contract. So the third evaluation of the city manager was conducted on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. And then at a later meeting on July first, the council discussed the terms and conditions of the employment agreement. And so this third agreement adjusts the term to extend it one more year to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. And it also includes a three-point-five percent base salary increase effective July first of twenty twenty-five. The fiscal impact for this is eleven thousand four sixteen annually. There is no need for a budget, a budget amendment. We can absorb this in our currently approved budget. And there is also no need for a CalPERS salary resolution because the council has already approved a salary range for the city manager position and this falls within the range.
Thank you. Questions for Director Reddick? Would anyone like to move approval? Sure. Baldino, so moves.
I'll second.
Keldor on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five-oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen, the urban search and rescue vehicle transfer to the Torrance Fire Department. Chief Avery, talk to us about our two thousand five Hackney trailer.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, again. I'm here to request to transfer our twenty-year-old urban search and rescue vehicle and the grant-funded equipment associated with it to the city of Torrance Fire Department. And before I start, I'd like to introduce Assistant Chief Tim B. Han from Torrance Fire Department. He's in charge of their special operations and he's there in the back. And also our battalion chief Evan Sifki, who's a twenty-year member of the urban search and rescue team, even though he's been here for twenty-four years. So this is a picture of our current urban, urban search and rescue vehicle along with the equipment inside. And for the public's knowledge, we use this vehicle whenever there is a highly technical rescue, such as, I'm sure you've seen in the news, a car will be driving by and lands into a sinkhole and dives in maybe twenty feet. Well, it takes very highly skilled firefighters like you have in El Segundo to go in there, shore the sides up and brace it so the rescuers can go in there and extract the victims. And this equipment does have that. It's also does higher angle rescue. We've had that and we helped El Segundo Beach with that. On this next picture is in Manhattan Beach where we helped them with a trench rescue that occurred in their jurisdiction. So I'd like to talk about the why we want to transport, transport the, use our vehicle to them, the frequency of use, what it takes to maintain the use our program, the fiscal impact, and some other discussion points. So our recommendation is that we, if we're. So our recommendation is that we, if we're able to, with your authorization, transfer this to Torrance. The fiscal impact is that right now there is none to the general, to the general fund. Along the way, since we purchased this 20 years ago, we've accumulated roughly $163,000 to replace the USAR vehicle. Well, that's all we have is $163,000, but to actually replace it. And if you direct me to continue the program, it would cost about $1.8 to $2 million to get a new one. The USAR vehicle itself is 20 years old. It's due for replacement according to the vehicle replacement schedule. And even if we do transfer it over to Torrance, it'll still be an asset in Erie G for us with their highly trained firefighters and administrative staff to help us along the way. So here's some of the background, as, as you already know, that, how we purchased it. We have firefighters that are dedicated to the program, but that population is diminishing from when we first received it. And frankly, we've had no responses in the City of El Segundo for five years with that vehicle. So I'm looking really from a fire chief's perspective, our return on investment. To date, we had 20 people on the job and it was enough people to support that program if it were to be deployed somewhere. And now we're down to 14 per day. This is due to retirements and just because of the requirements are so high and the amount of hours it takes to be highly certified in that, in that field. So here's the cost, if you were wanting to know, well, how much does it cost us to support this program? This is the cost. So it's for 11 40-hour classes, so 11 weeks of training, $100 per course, plus the backfill it takes for to, for allow a member to leave duty, to go to the classes and then for us to pay for them also while they're there. So $74,000 each. So in terms of what would happen if we gave it to them, they're still right there in Torrance. They've committed and Chief Behan is here to speak to that if you want him to, is that they would be readily available with their personnel to respond right back to El Segundo if we were to have any major emergency in the city. In addition, we have auto weight agreements with LA City and LA County surrounding us if we need even more than that, or if they're the closest resource or if Torrance is not available. So what is RTF? RTF is a regional task force and that was some of the narrative we used in the grant funding so we could get this equipment. And that means if something occurs anywhere up and down the state, this vehicle would go there with our people to support that event and mitigate that occurrence. We would get the funds back, just like a strike team, if they go out. Only we'd get those funds back for personnel and equipment costs. In the past, with a vehicle like this of that age, we've given an old fire engine to El Camino College as a donation, just because it was decommissioned, we didn't have a use for it, we didn't have, it was too much to maintain. So I think there's going to be some questions, I mean, I would ask, how much does it cost for us to maintain that every single year? And over the entire lifespan of it, it's been $32,000. So it's not much from a maintenance perspective, but I'm looking at it from a return on investment, what we have to support annually, personnel costs, training and dedication. Because as you know, we have very diverse skilled firefighters from SWAT team to going out on strike teams, to just the whole array of things that they do. And I would really want to take our most important assets and apply it to the City of El Segundo. And right now with the fire weather that we're about to have, have them available to go on those strike teams. So that's my request, if you have any questions. And thank you.
Council discussion?
Just so I'm clear, you said this was used five times?
Oh, yes, in the last.
Throughout its last, since we purchased it, it's been put in a service five times.
In the City of El Segundo, yes.
Last time it was used over five years ago.
Right, and we, correct. And we've helped, helped other cities.
Sure.
But this, for the City of El Segundo itself, it's been.
Okay. And your concern is, why are we spending time training people to use this specific type of equipment when we haven't really needed its services, when Torrance can take it over and we still would have access to it if it's needed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Silly question, Chief.
Yes.
This is just a trailer? It's the vehicle itself, does it have specialized organic equipment? Like a ladder truck has ladders, pump water? Is there, or does it just carry the equipment for urban search and rescue?
So it's a mix of grant-funded specialized equipment along with equipment that we've purchased along the way.
But this thing, it just carries equipment?
Just equipment, yeah, it's a big toolbox.
Who bought this thing? I mean, how many F-150s could we be driving, carrying this equipment? Look, I, I, I want to make clear, do we, have we budgeted? We, we may need some of this equipment. We have a gigantic fiber optic trenching project going on. We have major housing development on Pacific Coast Commons looking to be built. Like, there are risk exposures around, specifically around trenching and, and holes. Do we, will we have equipment for that, should we need it? I mean, all the equipment on this truck is going with the truck.
Well, I wouldn't say all, all the grant-funded.
All the grant-funded equipment.
But there will still be some USAR-related equipment that we have and our truck still has some equipment and they're only a neighborhood away if we ever need anything under emergency basis.
Has anyone ever seen this truck? Where has this thing been?
It's not been used.
I mean, how many of these things you guys got?
One.
No, I meant in the proverbial sense of extra equipment that those guys usually buy. Would anyone like to move approval?
Baldino so moves.
Baldino getting rid of a fire truck, there we go, seen it. Baldino on the first?
Second.
Second true, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Look at that.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, I appreciate it. Thank you, Chief Behan.
We have a green box on our Excel spreadsheet, first time ever. All right, item 14, Revised Athletic Field Facility Use and Allocation Policy.
Request, Mayor. Um, Linnea just was able to get here, she had an appointment. Can we switch and do the Plunge Mosaic? Give her a second.
Any objections to doing Plunge Mosaics first?
Just give her a second to breathe, she's been on the 405.
Does anyone need a restroom break? All right, we're going to take five minutes and we're going to do 15, then 14.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to continue our capricious use of the agenda and go to item 15, the Urusari Swim Stadium Tile Mosaic Public Art Installation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Thank you for having me here to talk on the Urusari Swim Stadium Public Art Installation. I wanted to say that the purpose of this item is to seek approval for a professional service agreement for the tile installation at the plunge. First, I want to give some background on the project. So the former cultural arts coordinator, Randy, brought this project to City Council on December 3rd of 2024. He asked for $127,000 to be allocated from the Cultural Development Fund. This money would be for proposals for artists, artists to create proposals and then all of the costs associated with production and installation of a tile mosaic at the facility. Once Council approved this, the project moved forward and the cultural arts coordinator left the city and Recreation actually obtained the project. Once Recreation obtained it, it was opened for a request for qualifications on the city's website. This was advertised for a total of seven weeks. We posted this on all sorts of artist classified websites and made sure that the word was out and we received 14 submissions. Once the submissions were received, we created a panel that consisted of five individuals, two from the Arts and Cultural Committee, one from the Reckon Parks Commission and two city staff. These 14 submissions were evaluated on four criteria, the letter of interest, the qualifications, the past work and the alignment with project goals. Each of these criteria had a different weight to it per the document that was brought to you guys in December of 2024. Once all these scores were given, a ranking of the 14 submissions was determined and there were a top three. These top three artists were then selected to a shortlist where they would be asked to provide proposals for this public art installation. They were given a tour of the facility, they were given all relevant historical information and they also received a $750 stipend to produce the proposal. They had about a month to provide the proposal and those three proposals went back to the same five panelists. It was again scored under these evaluation criteria, concept narrative, aesthetic quality, site suitability and budget and timeline feasibility. This was all compiled, all of the scores, and artists Pavelina and Alfredo Alea ranked first. It was at this point that the proposal was brought to the Arts and Cultural Committee. At the Arts and Cultural Committee, they reviewed Pavelina's and Alfredo Alea's proposal and they decided that they wanted to provide feedback to the artist. The feedback was given, the artist provided revisions and it was once again brought back to the ACC and they opted to recommend option one for the art installation. So now I want to give some background on the artist that was selected. So Pavelina and Alfredo Alea have over 25 years of experience in tile mosaic type work. They have several underwater themed art installations and several art installations at other aquatic centers. Here is some additional work that they have done. And that moves us to the designs. These were the three designs that were submitted. The Arts and Cultural Committee recommended option one. Here are additional close-up images of option one. Here you can see the wall that it would be installed in at the plunge. And here's some additional information on the installation. It spans 542 square feet. Each tile is 7/16 square inch. And the art itself is inspired by the art deco architecture of the plunge. The art is low maintenance, it's all outdoor material and the artist is providing a 15-year warranty on the installation. The project timeline would begin fabrication as soon as Council approves the project, if they decide to approve it. Installation would begin as early as November and completion would be done at the end of December. If you guys have any questions or need me to go back to the pictures of the art, I can do that. That concludes my presentation.
Council discussion on art.
I, I saw these on the Aquatic Subcommittee and I'm happy to go with design number one and I want to thank those who took the time to go through the whole process and give their input. I appreciate what they've done and number one's fine with me.
I would concur, I had an opportunity to see the most recent iteration before these at Arts and Culture Committee and enjoyed that conversation. And I did reach out, I think it was vastly majority rate approved to go with option one this last meeting, so works for me.
Motion to approve option one.
Motion to approve option one. Baldino seconds.
All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five oh, it passes. We successfully dodged an art bullet.
Thank you, everyone.
I eagerly await the Facebook post telling us how dumb we are. Item fourteen, the revised athletic field facility use and allocation policy. Come on down, Ms. Palmer.
Hi. Hello, everybody. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Tonight's staff is before you seeking approval of a draft field and facility use policy that lays out policies and procedures for the allocation of city fields, courts, and facilities for sports organizations. The Athletic Field Facility Use and Allocation Policy was originally developed in two thousand and four by the Recreation and Parks Department in collaboration with representatives from various El Segundo youth sports organizations. The purpose of the policy was to establish clear guidelines for allocating field space to user groups utilizing city athletic fields and facilities. It also set forth operational rules for the Youth Sports Council, now known as the Youth Sports Advisory Committee. The policy has undergone several revisions and approvals throughout the past twenty years. In two thousand and twenty-four, a subcommittee comprised of two commissioners and Recreation, Parks, and Library staff was formed to review the current athletic field facility use and allocation policy guidelines. During this revision, the policy was updated to mainly reflect changes made to the joint use agreement, revised maintenance responsibilities, revised wet field policy, and implementation of field use audits. Throughout two thousand and twenty-four, several additional inquiries arose about field use and allocation, special event processes, field-specific play, administrative requirements, decision-making authority, and voting rights of the Youth Sports Advisory members. Following October two thousand and twenty-four's presentation of the field policy to the City Council, staff were directed to look at the processes and policies further and bring them back for future approval by the City Council. From January through May of two thousand and twenty-five, a working group consisting of Recreation Supervisor Rachel Cummings, Commissioner Chair Bob Moda, Vice Chair Kelly Watson, and myself met to discuss and revise the current policy. The working group met five times over the course of several months and focused on several priorities, including clarifying for all new and existing user groups how the allocation policy functions, cleaning up formatting and language throughout the policy, creating clear guidelines and processes for decision-making, and cementing a philosophy for prioritizing youth organizations who embrace an Everybody Plays philosophy. Staff also spent time cleaning up the document by creating a linked table of contents, making formatting changes to improve the flow of the document, and updating the requests for use and acknowledgement of rules and regulation forms. One of the questions staff frequently fields is who ultimately decides prioritization and who has jurisdiction over the city's field space. To provide clear direction, the updated policy states Recreation, Parks, and Library Department staff will make the final decision on field allocation based on this policy and fairness to all affected groups. Any exceptions or special requests will be presented to the Recreation and Parks Commission for consideration. This includes but is not limited to: field allocation or permit issuance order, changes to a sports primary season, requests to modify current field lining and markings, requests to modify or improve any city facility such as storage containers or dugout updates. All organizations will submit for department review and then present to the commission for consideration and approval. The organization must have a board member at the commission meeting to answer any questions and provide information related to the request. This also gives other organizations that may be affected by the request a chance to speak on the request. During the revision process, staff focused on prioritizing opportunities for El Segundo residents. Moving ahead, Youth Sports Advisory Committee members will have field space allocated based on primarily on primary season designation and numbered of registered residents. New members and current members of the Youth Sports Advisory Committee will be required to submit league and team rosters every registered season to be monitored for residency requirements. The committee will only consider organizations that follow the Everybody Plays philosophy and all new member organizations will be subject to a one-year probation. The policy emphasized that all Youth Sports Advisory Committee members will work together in good faith to accommodate as many El Segundo-based youth sports organizations as possible on city-controlled fields. All Youth Sports Advisory Committee members will use good faith to ensure that they use their allocated resources efficiently, responsibly, and with good ethics to share space for all sporting opportunities in El Segundo. The established per-player fee now applies to all players and teams that practice or play on the city of El Segundo, Richmond Street School, Center Street School, or Raytheon Fields. And these fees will be charged during each registered season starting January two thousand and twenty-six. Lastly, during an organization's regular or in-season field request days and times, a minimum of fifty-one percent of games must consist of El Segundo-based teams. If more than half of the scheduled games are non-resident-based teams, that reservation date would be considered a tournament and will be offered for use by other prioritized groups first. Prior to today, the updates to the Athletic Field Facility Use and Allocation Policy were approved on May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five by the Recreation and Parks Commission and reviewed by the Youth Sports Advisory Committee on June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. So that concludes the presentation, but I do have Recreation Supervisor Rachel Cummings and Recreation Parks Commission Vice Chair Kelly Watson, who were on the working group with me today to answer any questions. Bob Moda is at the World Series, so he was unable to attend.
Council discussion.
Yeah, I got a few things. One thing I wanted, and I brought this up before, the nonprofit status, five oh one C three status. And one of the things I brought up was that the reason why we would give prioritization as well as reduced fees for a five oh one C three, the idea behind that was a one-hundred percent volunteer organization. So I understand Little League, softball, Babe Ruth, no coaches getting paid, no board members are getting paid. For those of you in the audience, I was the president of your league and Little League, so trust me. I know the hours you put in, nobody gets paid for this stuff. So I, I think that we have to look at that status. Like, one of the things that came up tonight, non-related, was the art walk. All of a sudden, it's a five oh one C three. You can't compare that to what we have going on with youth leagues. So I would like to see something in there that stipulates that the prioritization isn't just that you have a five oh one C three designation, it's that you're a hundred percent volunteer-run organization. So that's one thing I'd like to stick in there. I don't know if that's what we're supposed to do here tonight, but that's the first thing I'd like to put in there. Any comment either way?
I have a quick. Our group is mainly all volunteer-run and you see a lot of participation from El Segundo parents and locals. I will say there are some instances where a paid coach is important when there's like safety at hand. So if it's a specialized sport, it is important to sometimes bring in an expert that may be.
I'm talking about, for example, you got club teams. Some are listed as five oh one C three, some are listed as not, but they're doing the exact same thing. I'm just saying that I just want to have that delineation set in there so that the local programs that are strictly a hundred percent run get that break because that's what it's for. Because those other five oh one C threes just passed the cost on the parents. I know, I've paid a few on those. So I would just like to see something like that, up to update that.
That effectively prioritizes non-club versus club, right? That's the.
Well, I think the language, there's a website that will, will nonprofits have to disclose. I don't know if they disclose all salaried employees, but they do have to disclose some. And so if the, if the dividing line is that those that are providing a service in the city as far as coaches and, and board members, those kind of things, that everybody in the city directly working on those are not, are not being paid. You know, we can look at how we can make that determination, I suppose, too. We can make them submit something if that's the case. Almost probably even maybe Little League at the national level, there may be people that get paid, I don't know.
I know, but on the local level, Mark, there's no one here that, you know, these, these organizations, it's all parents. I'm just saying, look, I get it. I'm just saying that let's just not let the five oh one C three designation, which is fairly simple to get, just cloud it. Now, I might be making more out of this than needs to be. If that's the case and you have it under control and you think you can handle it the way it is, I'll curtailate to that, but in the end, I think it's important that we make that distinction because I think there's a lot of groups taking advantage of that designation. Sorry, I don't know what we can do here on that. Can I, can you just tell us, how has the allocation been working since we worked our new agreement with the school district and the city scheduling everything? Any issues? How's it going?
To my understanding, it's been fine.
Okay, then I will, I made my statement and then if you, as long as you can manage it, great, okay. Second thing I had is on the Youth Sports Advisory Committee member organizations, there's, there's a not, there's no vote involved on that. There was years ago when I was on that, but we changed that, right? But I didn't see it in the staff report.
Yeah, they removed him as, removed text listing them as voting members.
Was that an updated one?
I think it was met, on the two thousand and twenty-four one, it was clearly, but we removed it, the whole paragraph from the policy.
Yeah, they removed it from the policy. And this one I see it here, it's just taken out. I'm just saying, I think it's important that it's put in there.
Okay.
Because remember, it's, it's not just now, it's going into the future and different people come in and all of a sudden they realize, well, just want to make sure that's in there. And then on the Youth Sports Advisory Committee members, we grandfathered in a lot of, several organizations, right? I think it's Babe Ruth, it's Little League, it's AYSO, NLI, et cetera. Do we have an accounting of what the percentage of El Segundo residents are in each of those organizations? Like, for example, I know, I mean, Little League has to basically be a hundred percent, right? Oh, it's up there.
There you go.
So it's, so Babe Ruth is up there now, okay, good. All right, perfect. So one thing I did want to address after that was the discussion, I don't know if we can talk about that now, about the softball field and Richmond. So first of all, I didn't know.
Can we, can I just want to, Kelly, did you still have something to add? Because you were on the advisory for this.
You gotta come to the microphone.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta come on down.
There's a large home.
Just before we, before we change, change topics.
Yeah, I just, thank you. I just, Lance, we are, Commissioner Drew, we are in one hundred percent agreement on the philosophy of the not allowing clubs, but we felt that that was covered by the Everybody Plays and having multiple things then allows too many sort of wiggle room. And this was very clear, if everybody plays, we're already covered. So if somebody sets up a nonprofit, now we don't have to worry about whether that's, you know, in the scope of this. The paid coaching thing, there is a safety thing, so there are some times when a paid coach makes an appropriate sense. But as long as they are Everybody Plays, they're not, then, then we're okay. So I just want to make clear why, we absolutely discussed that a hundred times and we decided that the Everybody Plays designation was kind of the best proxy for, there is no club that we know of, that we could think of in our history that allows everybody to play. And as long as they meet the El Segundo requirements, then I think we're, we're golden.
Great.
And in terms of, what was the second one you brought up about the, the language about the voting? Yes, that's why we took it from a council to a.
Advisory.
Advisory committee because there is no voting designation for an advisory committee.
Okay.
That's, anyway, I hope that helps.
Great.
All right, back to, all right, so what was brought up tonight? So again, I've, I've, I've run both those organizations and I've been through this, all right? So one of the, a couple of things that were stated in, in the comments are not accurate. Sharing of fields happens in every single field in this town, every single one of them, even Brett Field. They, they all happen. Stevenson, you can kind of argue that it's just baseball, all right? But it's also, you know, flood zone, it's a catch basin for, I mean, that's, the, the baseball field's a bonus. It wasn't even supposed to be anything, all right? So you can't really look at that one and compare it to everything else. Every other field in this town is multiple use. Okay, also remember that the school district owns most of it. So as far as, you know, the paying of the field and all that stuff or what's being built, I have no idea what that's about. That's a deal with the school district that has nothing to do with us. As far as having a specific policy where first right of refusal, we don't have that anywhere. Never have. So once you start that, now you open the gates. Heck, the Chargers would love to come up here and buy up all these fields and put in whatever you want. So I am not in favor of that. Now, first of all, it's a, it's a softball field, so in the end, with our policies in place, they're going to get that time anyway, right? Because basically what you just put together gives them the right to the fields.
During their primary season.
Okay, but during fall, which is not the primary season, it's a softball field. So what's, what's, what else is it going to be used for, other than softball, right? And I know that somebody did say it's AYSO that plays out there because Richmond is where it is, right? But other than that, what else would it be used for? The only thing I ever see out there in Richmond Field is AYSO and girl softball.
There's co-ed softball.
Co-ed softball is only when Brett Field is not used.
It's kickball, I think.
So we just.
And by the way, is this, is the one, is the field you're talking about, is it the northwest corner or the southeast corner?
Is there another one going to be built, like in a different part?
Or is it that old, is it that one, one that's in the northeast corner by the church and the plunge? There's three backstops.
By TLC.
Is it by TLC or is it? The northeast corner? Okay, so yeah, the TLC by, okay, closest to the, to the Richmond Playground. Okay.
Question, genuine question, because I don't know the answer to this. So the reason why during Little League Walton and Baklar and all those fields are used by Little League is because they're baseball fields and not softball fields? That they're, because to, I did always assume that Little League had priority use of those fields. But is it simply that other teams don't want it because it doesn't work for softball? Or are they really given priority use?
Since we have acquired those fields for our scheduling, only Little League has requested those fields from the Sports Council or Committee, Advisory Committee.
Those are all joint use fields on school district property?
Yes.
So the field is going to be, you got the current field in Richmond right now, right? Where's this new one going to be built?
So basically their second base will face each other.
So one hits into the other.
With your coaching.
Yeah, I know, man. I, I, I've, I've seen it. I know, I've been there. I, I know what's there. My, my point is, is that if you start, if we start with these policies, it may seem like a good idea in the moment, but it becomes a bad idea later on when now you just realize that, okay, if I throw X amount of money into something, I can just buy it because we already had that kind of issue right now with flag football, right? That was one of the things that came up with space allocation. So I believe that girl softball is going to get the amount of time that is required and needed. I don't, I don't believe that it is necessary to make a stipulation because it's, it's there. You're the only softball thing in town. So that's, I, I don't, I don't see why. And again, this is what I brought up about Richmond, when we're taking over the billing for someone else's fields, this is the stuff that happens. Anyway, other than that, good job on the, on your presentation. Yeah, thank, thank you to everyone on the subcommittees for putting the time in. I'm glad that we now have a policy, we have a set of rules, we have a way for people to request what they want and then an equitable way of distributing our limited resource. So I think this is a great enhancement. Thank you for continuing to work on it and I appreciate it.
On the girls' softball field, so nobody has requested the Little League fields other than Little League. Has anybody requested the softball fields other than softball?
During the softball season?
Yes.
Not necessarily, no. As of today, right now, no. Just, just city programming, which is before them on the prioritization list.
City programming is before girl softball on the priority list?
Yes, but we only have, it's just adult sports, which our softball league runs throughout the summer and then kickball during the fall is two nights a week.
And there's no adult baseball?
No.
So there, I mean, I do see that as an, as an issue. It is an issue.
So a question for you, though, is there, have we explored, I guess, to Councilor Keldorf's point, are there any fields, any of the joint use fields on school property that would be suitable, that are big enough for the adult league? So if we moved adult softball to, like, I guess you could do it at Bacolier, right? It, it, it's Center Street?
And it goes on, it's at night.
Adult softball starts, adult softball starts in late June, early July, after the seasons are over. Yeah, so what are we talking about here?
Again, like, these are. Again, like, these are decisions best left to staff.
Right.
We're here to approve the policy and then let staff implement the policy, and we've just gotten told that it's been working okay with the school district. We've expanded the amount of field space the city is able to schedule and prioritize, so.
I would add a wrinkle, though, that there is a, if there's a specific capital improvement going on, that there is, there is probably something there because we own the scheduling of a capital improvement in the joint use agreement. I mean, maybe it's not for this discussion, but I don't think it's dead. I mean, I think there is a relevant piece to it. Like, when, certainly when Little League paid for laser grading and a new mound, they wanted input on the use of Brett Field for that, and that was a whole conversation. But anyhow, that said, Mayor Protem, if you would like to make a motion.
Oh, yeah, I'll move to approve the revised field allocation, use allocation policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, there's a second from Drew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is 5-0.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our agenda. Over to committees, commissions, and boards. Are there any presentations on those? All right, like, city clerk, anything?
I do. I would like to announce that the County of Los Angeles is going to be seating a grand jury. It's a year-long commitment, open to people 18 and older who are U.S. citizens. We've got information in the clerk's office if you would like to follow up on that, or you can go directly to the county's website. Also, I have a special shout out to a couple of Richmond Street students and their grandmother. They were very City Hall curious and came over this summer and took a lovely tour. Patricia Harada from our office, Shayla, and Cheryl Ebert were very kind and gave them lots of time. They got a big kick sitting in your chairs and taking photos all around City Hall. They did go home and watch a meeting, and I am very grateful to engage grandparents like that. So shout out to Sophia and Savannah Gonzalez from Richmond Street School. And that's it for this evening. But watch out for your jobs in a few years.
Is that a civil grand jury?
Uh, it is.
What's the nature of it?
It is. It is the Los Angeles County Civil Grand Jury, and I'd be happy to share this with you. It's also posted in the front window for those who might want to take a bigger look at it.
Outstanding. Councilor McKeldorf.
Um, well, I'm excited to see everybody at Art Walk on Saturday, and I do have a question, I think maybe for the city attorney. A few meetings back, we've decided to write a letter to the governor's office about El Segundo as an excluded zip code. I'm just curious, twofold, I guess. Is that ordinance expiring anytime soon, and have we gotten any kind of response on adding us to the list if not?
Uh, my office drafted something for the city manager sent out, I think it was back in April, and then we just sent another letter because we weren't on the latest order account, city, this El, uh, the city zip code wasn't on the latest order, and we sent another letter just, I think, last few days, asking why not, and again, encouraging the mayor to include the zip code. But to my knowledge, we've not received any formal response back.
And that ordinance is still in effect?
It just got extended again, and now I can't remember as I sit here to what date, but I will send, I will look at that again and send that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Drew, nothing for me tonight. Councilor Boils.
Just want to thank Mr. Allen and his team and Daryl George for what's going to be, I know Mayor will probably talk about at some point, but a very exciting opportunity for the city. It's not, it's not very typical for a city to be able to give someone a green light on a really big event with basically two days notice, right? No, no, it's for you to say, but I just want to thank you guys, and I'm glad that Mayor Pimental was there for the big occasion, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, Baldino.
Yeah, I want to thank the police department for their national night out. That was a fun event, very well attended, got to meet McGruff, the crime dog.
Yeah, where's our picture?
That was cool. Haven't seen him in years. Uh, I took a plunge tour recently. I encourage you all to go over there. They're making incredible progress. All of the heating equipment is now installed. The aquatic subcommittee that was not out on Monday, can we announce the Asari medals? That's a done deal now?
Working on it.
It's not a done deal. Okay, fair enough, then I won't announce anything exciting about that. Uh, on the 13th, I attended the planning commission's Vision 2050 workshop at the library. It was very well attended, I would say maybe 30 people. The format was great, they had like a slide deck going, but then people could go around and give comments on what they thought El Segundo should be, what they should do better. Uh, so thank you staff for putting that together, that was great. And then on the 13th, myself and Daniel Pankow, our environmentalist, went to an AQMD hearing to give testimony. And if you'll recall, the last hearing they had on Hyperion in November that Councilor Boils went to and gave testimony, the AQMD staff wanted to lift the abatement order at the end of the year. The board members, after hearing the testimony, wanted to continue it another six months. And to my surprise, watching it, the attorney for AQMD, AQMD was arguing with the board that you don't have the findings to make that determination. And so the board started rattling off issues of the notices of violation and odor complaints and all these things, and they were making findings. And then Hyperion's attorney said, no, no, we'll stipulate. You don't have to make any findings. We'll agree to stipulate to a six-month extension. So I've been asking, Mr. George, you know, wins his next hearing, it's coming up now, this is going to expire in August, we've sent letters to AQMD asking them to agendize a Hyperion matter before they lift the abatement order. AQMD did not agendize it. The abatement order, I believe, has expired in August. So I asked, well, what's the next hearing going on at AQMD? And it was the 13th of August. I drove down there and let them know our extreme frustration and disappointment that they would let this abatement order expire when we're still having notices of violation, we're still having odor complaints, and we have the same leadership that's been there this entire time. So I, I want to thank Mr. Pankow for going down with me. I, I, I don't know what effect it any other than just being able to vet the frustrations of being let down by this agency who could not at least have another hearing to explain why they think lifting the abatement order is a good idea for our city. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thinking Mayor Protem, I've got about 35 things I will try to be brief. By the way, that was a scathing public comment at AQMD. I mean, that was a withering, I watched that, even the guy on Zoom was sliding backward, it was unbelievable.
I, I wanted to make sure that the frustration of those in this town was expressed.
I do not, I think it was expressed. Uh, so Councilor Boils gave short shrift to his efforts on a project in, in a long, slow burn to fruition that suddenly came very quickly with Director Allen jumping in to, to help make it. We were announced as the host for the eSports World Cup next year, beating Riyadh. So today, Dr. Patrick Sun-Shun at LA, at the LA Times hosted us with Mayor Bass to make the announcement. Uh, it is, if you can believe this, 180 countries send delegations to this every year. Uh, there are 12,000 attendees live and in person that come to this every year. Uh, there is, you know, prospect of, of a significant redevelopment of, of a warehouse on the LA Times property. It was a, a, a big deal, uh, and well done, and your, your sort of grace in turning that over to me, I think, gives you, or does short shrift your efforts on it. It's a, it's a really, really, really cool thing. Other cool stuff, and I'll, I'll promise I'll try to be brief, but it's been a long summer. The police department has totally underplayed a 52% reduction year-on-year in Part 1 crimes, which is an unbelievable number, right? That's a testament to, you know, the training, equipping, morale of a police force, partnerships they have with the sheriff's department at the jails, partnerships with the district attorney's office, which we spent a long time cultivating. Uh, that is an amazing number. And that comes off of a, what, 24% reduction in the year before that? So that is a, I know that when crime happens to you, it's always 100%, but in the aggregate, that is an enormous, enormous improvement, and one that I think virtually any city in America will be very proud to have. So thank you to everyone on their collective efforts on that. Other interesting news, the IT staff and I have met with a few firms that do artificial intelligence interactions with websites. So the idea being that instead of people calling us on how to work LA Connect, or El Segundo Connect all the time, this is something where they could just talk to their screen and say, you know, how do I find my plans? How do, where do I get a business license? And this would populate that. It, the sums on it for these pilot programs are vanishingly small. I mean, we're talking somewhere between five and 15, $20,000 would be an annualized contract because it's just technology that hoovers things up. With your blessing, I will continue to explore that, but that is, we're certainly not committing to anything, and that would be, anything that would be above $50,000 that the city manager would take to us. But the idea would be something to have everyone stop wasting their time on rudimentary answers about how big a setback needs to be. Many of you know the sanitation tunnel collapsed? We are invested in that tunnel. That tunnel collapsed about four miles from its conclusion. It's a long time dig from LA sanitation, from Carson all the way down to San Pedro. They knew with varies, with pretty extraordinary detail that they were having some, some Boeing underneath. They were measuring with lasers, they tried to patch it, and it didn't collapse this way, it sort of squeezed in from the side. The downside is, is that enormous public works project that is 400 feet underground under the middle of Rolling Hills right now is going to be delayed for the foreseeable future and will probably cost our LA County sanitation people a little bit more money. I'm hoping that, or we, I should say, I, we are hoping that most of the, the insurance is covered, most of the insurance coverage of the contractor who does tunneling will address it, but the delay is significant, and that is an earthquake-prone system they have over there. And what will really set back is the efforts to recycle water. We went to battle with Metro. So there's $17 million being spent on the 405 to make longer onramps. Everybody will notice if you get on Rosecrans, that, that's a longer on-ramp onto the 405. Metro, or Caltrans decided that that should be cities' responsibilities, or groups of cities' responsibilities, to improve the interstate highway system, and has spent $17 million studying it and asked us to be the lead agency for $170 million on adding a lane. We elected to not, which has not gone over incredibly smoothly because they've already spent a lot of money on the environmental impact. But, you know, I was like, look, Dwight Eisenhower came up with the system, not Mike Gordon. So Carl Jacobson might have been involved. Also, hey, Big Wind Boeing, $2.8 billion satellite by freeways. We've had delegations from Belgium, Argentina, and India meet with us, asking how do we get involved in El Segundo's economy? And that's a testament to all the economic development work that Barbara Voss and her team have been doing. We have a big meeting this week on, for homelessness, on trying to get Measure A funding to be able to go to our, our South Bay Housing Trust instead of just blowing it on consultants. I think, suspect we'll be blowing it on consultants. And other than that, it's my big sister's birthday. She taught me how to drive a stick shift. She was the ultimate bullpen catcher. Happy birthday, Heidi. And whoever did the spearmint rhino practical joke, I think, is our man of the year, and I would like to ask them, yes, whomever that individual is who took years of my life away, I would like to thank them. But with that, city attorney, anything from you?
The session in Sacramento is going to be wrapping up soon, and we're expecting another deluge of housing and other bills that we will put together in a summary for you. And we got an extra bonus this year, as you know, in June, the governor signed a couple of mid-year bills, so I hope that's not how things are going to go in the years. It was just once a year with housing bills. If we're going to get them twice a year now, it's going to be even harder to keep up with, but it's about that time of year, and we'll get a summary out as soon as we know. I mean, about the middle of October is, I think, is the end of when he has the right, the timeframe to sign runs out. I never had those exact dates, but it's coming.
No, something I forgot, and this strays the line between committees, commission, and boards and council reports. Can we ask that if we're going to have joint committee, commission, and board meetings, that that's directed at the council level? So we're not co-mingling, you know, we assign different council, different committees and different councils, different missions, committees and boards, so if we don't, is that all right? Do we have to have a vote on that or anything, or? If we have to agendize it, yeah, I think that, that, yeah, let's, let's, let's leave them to their distinct missions. Okay, city manager.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just a couple of things. I, I do want to follow up on Mayor Protem's comments regarding AQMD and thank Mr. Baldino and our staffer, Daniel Pankow, for attending that meeting and expressing the frustration of not continuing that abatement order. Very, very discouraging. And speaking of that, since the last meeting on July 1st, AQMD did receive 97 odor complaints, which resulted in three notices of violation. So since July 1st, there were three notice of violation on July 27th, August 6th, and August 8th. We actually are meeting, we've had a significant meeting on Thursday with Barbara Romero, who's the general manager of Sanitation District, her staff, her consultants, along with Elias Sassoon, myself, Dr. Stenstrom, and our team, to have an all-hands meeting to get an update on exactly what types of improvements they've undertaken over the summer and additional improvements that they'll be taking on as they move forward. So I'll, I'll have more to report at the next meeting on that. But at least, and actually Barbara reached out to us to, to hold that meeting, so I'm hoping that's a good sign, at least in terms of, of opening lines of communication. And then also, there'll be a community facility tour at Hyperion taking place on Saturday, September 6th, from 10:00 to noon, and we will have information on that walkthrough on our website. And then finally, again, in follow-up to the successful kickoff of the community meeting regarding the, the land use element update, we've released a community survey regarding that, that is live right now on our website, and please take the survey, it'll be open until September 18th, which will gather more community input on that whole general plan, land use update. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
How about you, Michelle, the president?
I'll let Michael, other than our website, any other avenues?
Yeah, so I, I think the number that Paul gave me earlier was, earlier last week was, we sent it out via GovDelivery, which was approximately 15,000 registered email addresses. This is a, it's not a scientific survey, so maybe we, I can re, we re-qualify it as a questionnaire. This is us folks who do business here, live here, work here, visit here, anybody who has access to it, but, or anybody who's registered to those lists, but we'll also be pushing it out through the Herald and word of mouth and the various sort of streams, PTA and Rotary and Kiwanis and all the different groups that we also have relationships with.
Thank you. And I guess it, 8-0-1, we are adjourned.